We're very excited for tonight. On behalf of the YWCA Princeton, I want to welcome you here where us and Not in Our Town and the Princeton School Youth are just wanting to hear about what is happening in the Princeton schools, how important it is to vote, how important it is to hear everyone's voice, and we're really happy to have you here. So I'd like to welcome Princess, who will come up on behalf of Not in Our Town too.
Hi, guys. I'm Princess Hoagland, Chair of Not in Our Town Princeton. Not in Our Town Princeton, established in 1999, is a multiracial, multi-faith group of individuals who stand together for racial justice and inclusive community. Our focus is to promote the equitable treatment of all and to uncover and confront white supremacy, a system which manipulates and pits all races and ethnicities against each other. Our goal is to identify and expose the political, economic, and cultural systems which have enabled white supremacy to flourish and to create new structures and policies which will ensure equity and inclusion for all. In our commitment to uncovering the blight of white supremacy upon our humanity, we take responsibility to address it and eliminate it in all its forms through intentional action, starting with ourselves and our community. And I want to ask, Not in Our Town Princeton people, would you please stand up and be knowledge? We welcome and thank you for supporting and participating in the Student Organized Forum for Board of Education Candidates. We thank the YWCA Princeton for hosting this event, and we especially appreciate, we are especially appreciative of our Princeton High School students who organized this event, and to the Board of Education Candidates who are here to participate. Thank you. And right now, I want to bring up our moderator, Ryde Sanna. Hi, I'm sorry, the barrier. I'm sorry.
Welcome to the Princeton Public Schools Board of Education Candidates Forum, sponsored by Not in Our Town Princeton. Thank you so much for joining us this evening, either in person or via livestream. It's a very fortunate opportunity to have a conversation about the issues of equity, social justice, and mental health in our district. We would like to give a big thank you to the Princeton YWCA for allowing us to host this important event here tonight. Thank you as well to the candidates for being here and participating in this process so relevant to the Princeton Public Schools. My name is Malaria Torres-Luvaras.
And my name is Ryde Silverman-Sequins, and we will be co-moderating the forum this evening. Before we begin, I would like to briefly go over the structure of the debate, as there was a slight change of plans due to us receiving more student questions than we were anticipating, which is a really good problem to have. So our wonderful timekeeper, Samah Hashem, is in the front row, and she will display a yellow card or a yellow screen when 15 seconds remain, and a red screen when your time is up. When you see the red screen, please finish your sentence and try to wrap it up, because we have a very tight schedule, and there will be an opportunity to rebut. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. After all the candidates have responded, there will be an opportunity to rebut or to add to your answer for 30 seconds. The first part of the program is based on student questions that were submitted ahead of time. We will spend up to 70 minutes on this portion of the forum, and should have at least 25 minutes for audience questions.
Audience members, if you would like to ask a question, please take time to fill out the index card that was on your chair. We may not have time to answer all the questions, but Not in Our Town Board members will be circling around the room to collect the note cards. In addition to this, please do not interrupt and hold your applause until the end of the program. Please silence your cell phones and note that photography of any kind is not permitted.
Okay, so really quickly, before we begin, I would like to share a statement from the district's lawyer. So the incumbent board members are able to participate in this forum, however, they have to make it abundantly clear that any answers they give are their own opinions and answers, and may or may not reflect the sentiments of the Board of Education. Thank you. Candidates will be allotted two minutes for opening remarks and one minute for closing. Let us begin with opening statements with candidate Baglio.
Good evening. Thank you all so much. My name is Betsy Calvert-Bagley, and I'm running for reelection to the Board of Education. It's been my pleasure to serve the community in this role, and there's much more work to be done, particularly related to the issues we're discussing this evening. I'm very happy to be here, and I'd like to thank Not in Our Town Princeton and the Princeton High School students who've either moderated or moderated or have submitted questions. In my mind, considering the needs of all of the Princeton students now and in the future is the most important work we can do, and it's why I continue to want to do this work. My husband and I are proud products of public schools, and we know the value of a great public education for all students. We moved here with our sons in 2011 so that they could go to a great public school system. They're now in the fourth grade and eighth grade at Community Park in John Litterspoon. The value of public schools was instilled in me as a young child, my parents, my father was a school committee member in my Massachusetts hometown, my mom was a public school teacher, my in-laws are public school teachers, and then I became a public school teacher. So upon my graduation from Princeton University, I became a public school teacher in New England. I've also been an educational consultant, and I hold a master's degree in education. My research interest focused on how to measure the effectiveness of professional development, as well as teacher leadership, and the attraction and retention of excellent teachers. Before I was on the Board of Education, I launched the PTO's After School Club Program at Community Park, working to ensure that all students at CP had access to such opportunities at school regardless of whether or not they could pay. I was also a member of the Princeton Public Schools Strategic Planning Steering Committee, and I was a parent advocate for the launch of CP's Dual Language Emergent Program. As a member of the Board of Education, I've held a number of leadership roles over the past three years, but I especially love the work that I do as Chair of Student Achievement and Equity, and I'm happy to talk about that work today. I've served on the Personnel Committee for all three years, and I've been a member and a co-chair of the Policy Committee as well, and I'm currently the Vice President of the Board. So I believe the Board would benefit from continuity of leadership at this time, and I would very much like to continue the work that I've started. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Kerman, and you can read my bio in newspapers, so I'm going to dive right in and just tell you that I was a Montessori teacher, and that has shaped a bunch of my interests in childcare and many, many different aspects. I think it's incredibly important that this event is organized by Princeton High School students, because they're near voting age, they're getting experience in the real world of compromise, potential limitations, and in defining success. Equity and inequity come in all forms, economic, racial, intellectual, ethnic, gender, and more. It's a big world, and works best when we recognize each other's strengths and respond to each other's needs. As one special ed kid said, "Mom, every kid I know has something." Princeton has both diversity and a longstanding achievement gap, much talked about and aidily unresolved. We have programs to address this, and individuals who work for it, but it still persists. I'm struck by the efforts our schools make to address inequity, and by the degree to which they have not really succeeded, or not quite. At last spring's hearing of the Civil Rights Commission, I saw Superintendent Cochran's earnest presentation of measures to end discriminatory behavior on both students and staff, and the distress of parents whose children had experienced that discrimination. And I saw it as the classic conflict between policy and practice. I concluded that no matter how strong our policy, it's human connection that counts. One of the steps PPS has taken is to hire minority teachers, 30% of these years new hires. Not only is this good for children of all races, who same race teachers more easily become role models, but it's good for staff. There's nothing like working with a person as an equal, to show that he or she is an equal. Racial identity can be a primary issue for kids with IEP. For majority of white teachers, additional training is critical, and the individual follow up with teachers, children, and their families. I want to be certain that these policies work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Betsy. My name is Daniel Dart. I'm a proud supporter of the Princeton Public Schools. I have a daughter who graduated from the system, 12 years now in college, and I have another child at fifth grade. And so I'm very excited to be here and about the educational opportunities we have for our kids and our community. My background is heavily in finance and running leadership programs. I was a Chief Operating Officer of Merrill Lynch Investment Managers, one of the largest money managers in the world, and it struck me as I've become involved the last six or eight months in the schools, you know, how much money is at stake and how important it is. And with the $130 million Facilities Referendum, we're spending about $100 million a year for our operating budget and other things, and so prioritizing spending, spending money wisely, is a huge need. And I believe that my background brings adversity in leadership and financial skills to that issue. And of course, the schools are not only important to our wonderful children, but they contribute 48% toward our property taxes. And affordability, particularly this year, has become a leading issue, not only for seniors and other middle-class families, but also to the economically disadvantaged. So I want to make sure that we maintain an excellent school system, an affordable school system. So the last six or eight months, I've focused on a lot of the financial issues related to the facilities plan. I'm very excited that we have a $27 million plan to address critical facility needs that will be on the December ballot. And I'm delighted to talk about some of the other facilities that equate in education and closing the achievement gap, and so I really want to spend time really on educational priorities and making sure that we have adequate funding for those priorities. So I'm delighted to be here.
Thank you to Not in Our Town and the Princeton High School students for providing this forum, for this important discussion. My name is Daphna Kendall. I'm running for reelection to the Board of Education. I've served as a board member since 2016. My family and I moved to Princeton in 2011 when my son was in second grade. My son had learning disabilities, and the public school system we were in was making it extremely difficult to address his needs. So my son attended Littlebrook, JW is now a freshman at Princeton High School. My daughter attended Littlebrook, and she's now in sixth grade, and JW. I have served on the Board of Education for three years. I have chaired three committees and served as Vice President. Additionally, as a first-generation student myself, the district's equity initiatives have been extremely important to me. In addition to my service on the Board, I have been a mentor through the Give Back Foundation for our first-generation student at Princeton High School for the past three years, and additionally, I'm a trustee for Princeton Children's Fund, which is a 501(c)(3) organization whose mission is to provide access to enrichment and extracurricular opportunities for students whose families would otherwise be unable to afford them. I've also volunteered at Littlebrook, and I was a softball coach for my daughter's little league team. I decided to run the Board of Education in 2015 to work towards increased transparency, foster positive relationships within the PPS community, and to seek alternative sources of revenue to ease the burden on the taxpayer. I'm a mentor. I give something back. Because as a first-generation student myself, I wanted to provide support to students who may go through circumstances I've experienced and hopefully help them avoid some of my pitfalls. And I'm a trustee for the Princeton Children's Fund because I want to help all students have great experiences and work to close the achievement gap. And through the generosity of our neighbors and partnership with community organizations, Princeton Children's Fund has helped hundreds of children to do just that. During my term on the Board, there have been meaningful substantive changes relating to equity in our district. An equity audit was conducted in January so the district could understand our areas of strength and the areas in which we need to grow. We implemented a racial literacy class for the first time, and the district is discussing a racial literacy class for all students. The district, pursuant to the equity audit, is examining our need to do better in responding to issues of bias and oppression. We have begun to make major changes in our curriculum so that students see themselves in it, and so that multiple narratives are shared, not just the traditional majority narrative. Book choices are becoming more local. Sorry. Wait or something.
She was being too polite.
I'd like to join the other candidates and express my thanks to the student organizers and to the Y for hosting this event, and to Not in Our Town and Princess for the important work that they do. I'd also like to thank Betsy and Daphna for their service to our schools for the past three big years, and to Mary and Dan for running for positions on the Board of Education. These are time-consuming volunteer roles, but they are critically important ones. Finally, I'd like to thank everyone in the audience, and I'd like to thank those watching live on Facebook, including my wonderful wife. Hi, honey. I'm Brian McDonald, and I'm also really happy that the referendum will not be our main topic tonight. I'm running because our schools are the critical point in our history, and we do need to make important decisions about aging facilities, increasing enrollment, that's already resulting in overcrowding, and we need to wrestle with a second great challenge, which is an operating budget under considerable stress. And I think I can help in both of those respects, and it's very much in keeping with my background. Having said that, here's the part that's really important. The facilities in the budget are meant to serve a much higher purpose. They exist to allow us to deliver the best educational experience possible, and I hope that will be the primary focus of much of our conversation tonight. When I announced my candidacy in other forums and talks, I've made three points not directly related to the facilities of the budget. First, while our schools are excellent overall by many measures, the experience of some schoolchildren, especially at the high school, have varied greatly over many decades. Second, I believe that our schools and our society face three great challenges: racism, inequity, and affordability in an age of increasing economic inequality. And third, for too long, the mental and physical health and wellness of our high school students have not been sufficiently addressed. The superintendent and the Board have made significant strides in the past two years, but we have a great distance to go to say that we are delivering a truly excellent experience for all of our children. I've seen this through the eyes of my own three children, the youngest of whom is a sophomore, and I know it's an experience that many other parents have seen through the eyes of their children. To get to the students' questions, which I think is why we're here, I'm going to skip a recitation of my qualifications and just say that I love this town, I love our schools, and I would like to continue my service to this community as a member of the Board of Education. Thanks.
All right. I just want to give a little disclaimer. I'm no longer a PHS student, I'm a Princeton University student, but I'm still here.
She was amazing last year. We had to get her again.
No, I've been in the Princeton Public Schools district since I was seven years old, so I went through it. Okay, now, and I'm also losing my voice, so bear with me. So for the first question, how can the district better respond to incidents of racism and bias? Mary?
Every incident has its own cause and its own participants. I think it's really critical not to jump and say, "Okay, you did the wrong thing," or "Who is it that's wrong here? Who started this?" These are the things we used to say to kids. I think all we should be saying instead is, "Hey, what happened here? What happened to you? What happened to you? Why did you do this? What do you think is all about?" I think that the policy is clear that no child should be discriminated against, but how to arrange that is difficult. We all have our habits, we have our things we don't notice that we're doing. These things require training and insight, and I think that the most important part of that is, again, the human contact, that when you have a child who has a problem and creates a problem for another child, you know, there's something there to look at. It's bigger than just a little fight. To suspend kids, I think, is not necessarily helpful either. That way, you take them out of the system and you lose control over any learning that they might do. Counseling is critical, and I'm really glad to see that the Kristi number has been taking care of the counseling help for the schools. It's articulate and concerned and hardworking and creating a really terrific program, and I hope it's received.
Candidate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. The first thing I would do is hope that the school, the entire district, would be very, very proactive about eliminating the inequity in education, and I think that the school district has taken a number of steps in promoting better training, better monitoring, a more culturally responsive curriculum, a more diversified staff, and I think that sends a large message to the community that racism will not be tolerated. And I think that's really the larger issue here, is to be very proactive about taking steps in all areas, as a community, as a school district, and to make sure that these incidents are few and far between.
Great. Candidate Kendall?
So I agree with Mr. Dart that it's unacceptable, and I think over the past three years, the district has made great strides towards educating our staff and students on what's expected, and one of the things we did was the equity audit, and one major finding from the audit, our study circle that was established is examining the need to do better in responding to issues of bias and repression. Our struggle has been to react and educate after an incident. The study circle has helped us, will help the district, to look more systemically at what can be done before. How can we focus, for example, on building empathy, resiliency, and care for others? Another thing we are doing is fostering a sense of community. For equity to be achieved, students and staff need to feel connected and supported. At the middle school, there is a new period, the advisory period, has been implemented. Once a week, students come. Okay. Thank you.
I also agree that we cannot be comfortable with any level of racism or bias in our schools, and I think that the work being done on equity in Marceline DeBose's report, if you haven't read it, I strongly encourage you all to read it, it's on the PPS website, is really powerful, and it's scary in some places when you read that, for example, a high fraction, 76%, of the teachers don't always have confidence in their fellow teachers to treat students equitably. So that kind of tells you just how deeply rooted the problem of equity is in our schools and how long it's been there. And the only way to address it is to work comprehensively at all levels with a lot of focus and with a lot of time, and with the commitment that comes from the Board, the superintendent, and the principals, down and then up through the students themselves. There's a lot we can do in the curriculum, and maybe we can talk about that later, but I just wanted to note one other thing, which is I'm a believer in social justice and hope that as we have the conversation about how to deal with these incidents, that we can also talk about restorative justice. Because when we get the students' voices involved, and we talk about understanding and acknowledgement, we can then move to reconciliation and a better community.
Thank you. Candidate Bagley?
I agree with all of the candidates, and this is something we all must work as hard as we can on, and I have done that with the other board members. There have been, we've been told about incidents of bias, or talked about this, both on the part of our teachers and our students. And so our equity audit found that only 57% of our students, 64% of parents, and 26% of faculty say if they report a concern, their concerns will be addressed. That's a problem. Similarly, there's a high self-report, which is very typical, but 91% of faculty agreed with this statement. "When a student reports experiences with racism, sexism, homophobia, or other forms of marginalization, I believe them and help create justice for themselves and others." And this was a quote from the report, but only 57% of students believe that happens. So I think there's much more work to be done. We've created lines of communication on our website. We've created a document that tells parents and students who to contact if something were to happen from multiple parts of the district, whether academic or not academic. But I also think we need to have this very clearly in our codes of conduct, make sure it's reviewed with students and parents, and not just a sign-off on the binder. I think it needs to be a conversation, and I think we have a lot of work to be done.
Excellent. So if any candidate would like to give add-on to their statement for 30 seconds?
I think that if kids don't feel accepted, or if they can see that other kids are not accepted, that creates targets, and no child should be a target. Yeah, when kids feel understood, they're less apt to create a problem. I remember in my school, we taught five-year-olds that if somebody came up to them and wanted to hit them, that they should take that person's hand and just put it down, and they did. It worked. So you need to teach children how to respond also in case of a threat.
Anyone else? All right, excellent. Then we will move on to question two. In this question, we're going to begin with candidate Dart. The question is, how would you go about addressing the lack of representation in various accelerated and AP-level courses at PHS?
Do you have to save that question for someone else?
No, I think you're going to start. You can do it.
That's a really, I would address it a couple of ways. One is, in going through the Stanford audit of the kids' experiences, I was very struck by the dichotomy between our mission statement, and that which many of our high school kids reported on. And so while they're achieving, many of them are, no, most of them are achieving wonderful educational outcomes, it's clear from the survey report that they're not sleeping at night, they're stressed, and they're not enjoying the school and the learning environment the way that they should. So maybe I'll rephrase that question. Should we have more kids taking more AP courses, or should we have, you know, fewer of them? And I don't think that they, I think the AP courses and the accelerated courses are wonderful, and I think for many people, I would not want to take them away, but I think we have to think about why we're taking them. And I don't think that employers, I don't think college admissions officers value them as highly as perhaps some students do. And I don't think it's work, the mental health issues, the stress issues, the lack of sleeping issues. I would rather see everybody focus on a core curriculum and really enjoy the academic department.
Candidate Kendall?
Thank you. So the question was, how to increase? I can read it. Thank you. How would you go about addressing the lack of representation in various accelerated AP-level courses at PHS? So this has concerned mine as a parent of a special needs child. I've found in his situation that people make assumptions about his ability based on the class that he falls in, and I feel that extends to other groups as well. The equity survey showed that there's discrepancies in advanced coursework participation. 61% of the Asian students participate in advanced courses, 51% of white students participate, but the participation rate increases to 30% of black students, 13% of Hispanic students, and only 12% of students with an IEP participating in an advanced course. And so I think that has to do with expectations, and I think first, everyone has to understand that they have a responsibility for every student in the building. It's very easy to educate. I have a daughter that's neurotically, developmentally on target, and she's much easier to educate than my child is, than my son is. And it's very frustrating as a parent to see what goes on, and I think across the Board. So I've seen people make generalizations, and so I think raising expectations for all kids is important. I understand the stress with the AP, but this is a different question. This is specifically, what can we do to raise expectations for our children of color and our special ed kids so that... our specialized kids so that they also have the chance to receive their high, achieve their highest potential? Thank you.
I guess I would answer a little differently. I think part of it may be expectations, but I think this really goes to the heart of some of the equity concerns. As Steve often says, Steve, the superintendent, you know, equity is not equality. So when we add somebody to the ninth grade, we get a group of students to the ninth grade, there are many different paths that they take. And the fact is that some are much better prepared for rigorous coursework than others, and it correlates typically with income. So the students who are most in need of our efforts are the ones who aren't benefiting from those, you know, very challenging classes. There's no easy answer, but I think we have to start at the earliest point. And we do have a, a pre-K program that's making some progress. We've got to deliver kids as close to grade level as possible at fifth grade and then keep them there and understand that if somebody's able to afford tutors and has parents who are home all the time and not working two jobs, that it doesn't mean that that talent, that, that their child is more capable than someone else's child. And so that's what we need to think about. It's not easy. We have to start early, but this is gonna require a huge effort.
I agree. This is, this is something that the Equity Committee, the Equity Committee is an ad hoc committee that was started this year by the board. I chaired that committee. It was approved unanimously at our October fourth meeting to, to suggest that this would be a permanent committee. This is not ad hoc or temporary work. This is a permanent committee. And it should be focused on in every committee, but we need a specific committee to look at this work. But I agree that it has to do with high expectations and not just in high school. We have to look at our elementary teachers, our middle school teachers, how our students feel that they are being prepared and how, how they're feeling accepted at school. I agree that there's so much to do before the child even comes to kindergarten. One of the initiatives of the school is, the, the board is considering as potentially a pre-K program that would allow students who can't afford a pre-K program to go, and those who could pay for it would pay for it. Similarly, our wonderful science supervisor, Eddie Cohen, has created a summer program for the past two summers that has really answered this question, partially, started to answer this question. He's, he found that there was underrepresentation in higher levels in science, and he created a program, a summer program, to allow students opportunities to take not necessarily just AP, but a higher-level science course than they would have taken. Year two, he found that what some students needed actually was math as well as science. We wanna set all students up to succeed. And so I really, I laud the innovation of people like Dr. Cohen, and I hope to see that in other subjects throughout the district.
I'd like to make a couple of practical, select suggestions that don't actually cost in any money. When I was at Montclair High School as a student there, what I noticed was that the AP classes of what we called, yeah, advanced classes, were populated entirely by white kids, whereas the tenth grade English class, for instance, in our opinion, which was an advanced English class, had a history of black students, a couple of whom I admired and wanted to know, but never did get to know because it just didn't happen and wasn't encouraged in any way. But I think it's important to remember that what happens is not only that the students don't qualify for these classes, because they do, it's that they don't want to take them. And the reason they don't want to take them is good friends don't leave their friends behind. If all your friends in your social set are not included in your classes, they're gonna put pressure on you not to do it either. And that's very important. Another issue is that because the Stanford report indicates much schoolwork and forum and busy work, I think we should ask students themselves what would interest them at all levels. And that's what they could suggest. Maybe every student should develop his or her own IEP. I hear somebody saying, "Ooh." But if, when they do that, it should be an IEP that doesn't force that also. Most teachers get out of the rut that they may feel, bearing molds that they don't like either. So let's have discussion rather than impending lectures.
Can the panel be allowed to rebut or add-on to their statements?
So, the way that question was phrased, I just wanna comment. I'm a strong supporter of achieving the, eliminating the achievement gap. And when you look at the graduate, graduation rates, for example, you know, for every ninety-seven percent that graduated, it means that three percent didn't graduate. I think we as a community, we as a school district, need to partner with the university, use nonprofits and municipality, put resources on that part of the community that has not, not succeeded. I'm just not sure measuring a success by the number of various placement courses is the right measure of success.
I'd also like to say, going back to the Equity Audit, that ninety-three percent of our teachers agree or strongly agree that they do have equally high academic standards for all students, which is wonderful, but the students and parents don't respond in those numbers. So we all get to know, we, we know each other well now because of these forums, and I talk about professional development a lot. I used to teach professional development, but I think that it takes more training for teachers. They may think that they are presenting that they have high academic expectations for all students, but for some reason, it may not be perceived that way by all students. And I think more work has to be done on that.
I'd just add too, just respectfully, so I understand that AP classes and wellness is, is an issue, but this specific issue is, the, the numbers don't lie. There is, children of color, children with special needs are underrepresented in higher-level courses, and I think we really need to look and see why. And I can speak from personal experience, and I have, and I have experienced it. And I think there's many reasons and not focused around the child for this, and I think that we need to look into it.
Thank you. Students who are English language learners and who have special needs are often placed into special classes in order to address their needs. However, as a result of this, these students often remain in these classes throughout much of their time in Princeton public schools, if not all of their time. This means that they're often not in frequent contact with their peers who don't partake in these classes, and they never have the opportunity to take any other advanced courses or even normal courses. What policies would you mitigate that, would you, excuse me, what policies could help mitigate the isolation of ELL students and students with special needs?
So, my friend who was on the board in 2016, one of those superintendent's miracles was, so, the district, I think thirty-five percent of African-American students and thirty-three percent of Hispanic students are classified. And they make up five percent and nine percent of the population respectively. So clearly, there's disproportionality. The superintendent's miracle, one of them was to reduce that number. And I remember sitting in the meeting, and he did not meet that goal. And I was very pleased about that because I think reducing the number isn't the way to go. We need to look at how we're classifying and why we're classifying these kids, but, and I think that takes a long lens view, and so why I was happy the number didn't go down right away is because I wanna make sure that every kid is, every student is receiving the services they need. But clearly, there's some unconscious bias where children of color are being disproportionately classified. And, and how I would deal with that is what I think the district is starting to do, which is professional development. Teachers are, are thinking about their unconscious biases, and it's a very hard conversation to have with yourself, but we all have them. I think there is more professional development on education and learning to understand kids and understanding microaggressions, and I think all of these things go towards equity. And equity in this district, I always say, this is a great school district, but I think the measure of a good school district is how we treat our weakest students, and for that I mean special education and our children of color, and I think we can do better.
My guess is that the strategies for doing that are many and complex, and some educators might struggle with specific strategies. But what I would say is that with respect to special needs, you know, the law is to place students in the least restrictive environment possible. And Princeton, our schools try to do that, but clearly, there's a lot more that has to happen. And I think, you know, a lot of this is, you know, relates to diversity, because there's this notion that some kids need to be separate for a variety of reasons. But I think that the more time all the kids can spend together, the more diverse the environment is, the more we can function as a community. And so I, I do worry about the sort of unintentional stigmatization of groups that are categorized differently, whether it's special needs or not proficient English students or free and reduced lunch students who go off and get in the line and get their lunch and in a short period of time don't really have an opportunity to mix with their peers. So anything that can be done to have students together as much as possible, I think is great, and would candidly love to learn more about what the solutions are to that challenge.
Would you like to finish one question? Students who are English language learners who have special needs are often placed into special classes in order to address their needs and often remain in these classes throughout much of their time in the Princeton Public Schools district. This means, however, that they're often not in frequent contact with their peers, and they do not, they are not allowed to take classes outside of these special courses. What policies could help mitigate the isolation of ELL students and students with special needs?
Thank you very much. I think it's looking at practice first, not necessarily policies. I can talk about the dual-language aversion program briefly at Community Park School. So I said at the outset, I was a parent advocate for the launch of the program. This was launched as a pilot before I was on the board. My son is in the first cohort, he's in fourth grade. It's the fourth year of the program. And part of that program was to think about our English language learners who, specifically are Spanish speakers in this town, who, for whom this program would benefit them as they could be a leader. In half of their day, they're speaking Spanish, and they're learning math and science in Spanish. That's what some of our classes at Community Park are doing. And so what we need, what our challenge is, however, is continually looking at this program, how to make it better for all students, how to ensure that native speakers are, are brought into the program. We, we are encouraging students from all four schools now to be able to take part in the program, but I think we have to make sure that that's happening. Also, I'll talk from experience. I'm a public school teacher. My first year teaching sixth grade, I had an amazing mentor who was a co-teaching special education teacher with me. She's the best teacher I ever met, and she made me a great teacher. So I would say some of the things that we can try to make sure that students are not in specific courses is to look at flexible groupings, to look at co-teaching models, which we do. And we need to definitely do more of that. I can also say, for student achievement, we have to approve any new courses that come up. And there have been new, and I'm, I'm not sure if they're called core courses or not, but there have been new courses developed recently for English language learners in different subjects.
When I heard about the Spanish emerging program, I thought, what a great idea. And what really impressed me was that half the day was being taught in English and half the day was being taught in Spanish. And what that did was allow the Spanish-speaking kids to teach and to know the subject that despite that the minority or that the majority, white students, didn't know or didn't know how to express in Spanish. I think that's a great way to showcase the skills and abilities of minorities who don't ordinarily get the opportunity to do that. I think also there are other ways to do it, to help families, to encourage them. One of the things that my partner Peter and I have done is to sort of quote-unquote adopt a single-parent mom in town here who's trying to get through college. She's the minority person. She's trying to become a social worker. She's trying to get through Mercer County Community College, but she's in a low-paying job, and she's got a child to take care of, and all the struggles of being a single parent. We're helping pay her tuition to go to college, and I think there are many families that would like to do that as well. I suggested it to the Board of Education President a couple of years ago, and he said, "Oh, that's a good idea." But then when I said it again, he said, "Well, it's really too difficult if I embarrass people to be asked." So, yeah, so I, my, my response to that is, we already have a list of kids who are getting free, reduced-priced lunches, so we know who these children are, there's no reason not to say, "Can we help you?"
Thank you. So, the law says that we should be educating our children in the least restrictive environment as possible, and obviously, we should and must comply with that. In addition to that, I think the parents should play a larger role in that, because I think social isolation is, is, can be very damaging, segregation and so forth. So I think the parents should have more input into ways to mitigate that by, by, by adjusting the curriculum to the needs of the individual child so that it, that child's not experiencing any social or other ways of being isolated.
So does any candidate wish to add-on to their statement?
I just wanted, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, Betsy mentioned the DLI program, and one of the, which was started before we were on the board, but one of the goals of the DLI program was to close the achievement gap. And I think the second year, we had a status report, and I think there was seven or eight children who were native Spanish speakers in the course. And so we asked why, and we found that the parents of the native Spanish speakers didn't want their kids in a dual-language program because they were afraid their kids aren't gonna, were gonna learn English. So the problem is very deeply rooted and something that has been experienced by society for many years, so it's something that we all need to work on.
I would also say that students can often be our best advocates for all types of students who, who may struggle in one way or the other. I know with my sons at Community Park, it's quite a, it's a transient community because people are moving from all over the world and often spend just a year or two here to do a post-doc at the university. And, you know, friendship does not let, I don't know what the, the phrase is, but a smile, right, in any language can welcome a child. So I think we need to make sure we're doing enough to encourage students' connections with one another. I think the new community period at the middle school does a lot to do that. So I think we have a lot of work to do, but we can always look to our students to help our, their other friends.
I understand that there's a fair amount of tutoring, professional tutoring of students who are behind in their studies, but I would like to recommend also peer-to-peer tutoring. I think that should be explored. When I was a high school student in Montclair, I tutored a classmate in French because she was having trouble passing the exam, and it worked out well for both of us. She learned and I learned. Peer tutoring helps reduce costs while developing skills and friendships with kids who learn how to give and how to accept, learn how to give, help them learn how also to accept it. But ability differs, giving high achievers academic credit for helping out is a good, creative way of teaching.
Anybody else? All right. We'll move on to our next question. So at this time, we are going to start with candidate McDonald. Discuss how you would better assist low-income students in Princeton, including and beyond fostering relationships with low-income parents and families.
Great question. And I would add that it's not just the high-income students, it's the low-income families that we can do a lot better with as a community, but specifically with the kids. Again, the earlier we can start, the earlier we can get them, you know, feeling like engaged members of the community who are performing at or above the same level of their peers, I think, you know, they're gonna feel differently than they may now. I think that, you know, this is just, the income inequality in our country is a really, really challenging one to deal with. And the kids are probably better able to solve this than some of the adults, because when they're on teams together, when they're in classrooms together, there's an awful lot, there's an awful lot of good that happens. But obviously, at the district level, I think ideas like Superintendent Cochran's community school would be absolutely outstanding. I'd love to see that. I'd love to start testing it right now. Why not do it at Community Park? Why wait? I mean, I think they're great opportunities. We could begin not, not to engage our families and to make the school more of a center for our community and have as many people there as possible. I also think that, back to the families, and I- I also think that, back to the families, and I think the district's done some good work here, it's not always easy to navigate the district via way you kind of calls you make, forms you fill out, and to be able to walk people through that and make them engaged and invested in the life of the community is going to help the families, is going to help the students.
Thanks. So the Equity Committee, again, we've focused on a lot of this work. So in 2016, when we first, Johnson and I were first on the board, the board voted to create an equity fund to ensure that all eighth-grade students would be able to go on the John Lutherspoon trip to Washington, D.C., regardless of their ability to pay. This is a curricular trip that we want every single student to have the experience of, just like Gettysburg. But then we found there were so many other opportunities that students were not necessarily able to have. Or if they're asked for a graphing calculator, to bring one in, and it's not on the syllabus, well, what happens if I can't, if my family can't afford that? So one thing that we're really working on in the Equity Committee, or two things, many things, but two specific things, are to have any time a financial ask is made of any amount, there needs to be included a statement that says, if for some reason this presents a financial burden for you and your family, please contact X at X. It is not up to a student to go to, we do not want a student to have to go to a teacher and say, I'm sorry, I can't partake. They may not do it, they may not say that. So whenever there's an ask, we need to do that. Some changes recently have been made with athletic registration as well. We found this fall that students, we were alerted to the fact that students needed certain equipment in order to try out for a sport. That is not right, and that is not equitable. So now, as you are registering a child for a sport, it will say, I think it's something about equipment assistance, and we're working with our athletic department to get that going.
Will you repeat the question? Discuss how you would better assist low-income students in Princeton, including and beyond fostering relationships with low-income parents and families.
I think I did address part of that already, but I think that the most important part of it is that every kid, again, is different, and every kid needs to be understood and recognized for his or her own interests. And we need to bring them into the school system by understanding what their interests are. I think I've actually answered the question before.
Thank you. I'm actually surprised now that we haven't tried the community school concept before, and I think Community Park would be an excellent centrally-located place for that. And I think what we need to do that to make that experiment successful is have a partnership with the university, the municipality, some appropriate organizations, as well as the school district. But I think that's something we can and should do, and I think we have a wonderful opportunity to do that here. And Central Park, Community Park is well-located, the university is within a short walk, we have massive and untapped resources at the university, many of our parents and parents in public school children who would love to contribute time and effort and intellectual help to this problem. And so I think we have a wonderful opportunity to try that, and I think it will work.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. So discuss how you would better assist low-income students in Princeton, including and beyond fostering relationships with low-income parents and families.
Okay, thank you. So right now, the district has community liaisons at each level. We have one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one to deal with all elementary schools. And these individuals serve as resources for our underserved families. It's interesting, in November of last year, there was an immigration and custom enforcement raid in Princeton, and we had three individuals, like I said. And that day, we had three people working with those families because they were afraid to come out of their homes. So it's interesting, when I hear the budget's under strain, 15% of our kids are free and reduced lunch. The New Jersey Department of Education says it costs more to educate those kids. 18% of our students have IPs. The Department of, the New Jersey Department of Education says it costs more to educate those kids. So we are doing that, and I would like to see a community liaison at every school.
Would any candidate like to add on to their statement?
I'll just piggyback on that. What Daphne said about liaisons, they do work incredibly hard, and part of our work with the Equity Committee is that we've brought their work together and some additional conversations have been had about how not to be duplicative of that work. But I think it comes down to continuity of communication. And many, actually, I look out in this room, many of you have worked with us on the Equity Committee at one point or another. For example, we have musical instruments to rent to students for free who need them. That communication has to come home from every single school the same way. So regardless of what school your child is at, you know that that is something that's available to you. So we're working really hard on improving communication, and that's, our liaisons are a big part of that work.
I'm going to add very little that I said before. We have low-income communities within the larger community of Princeton, and I think those lower-income communities need to get some attention in themselves. I think what Brian said about low-income being a factor in education is very important and very true. But I'd like to see every school, community school, I don't understand why it's not considered important to say that instead of renting out space in a new building, that we should use the empty space at night in the old buildings. They don't have to use the whole school, they can use one or two rooms and the cleaning staff can clean those ones last. I think also it's important to help children walk to school. I don't like the idea of a five-six school that requires kids to be passed all over town. If kids have, if you have a low-income community and it needs to be attention, given attention and appreciated, I think the idea of putting some improvement to a magnet school or at least a good school, who then reaches that community so that other children want to come to that community and want to get to know the people in that community, want to help that community, and then learn from it. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to add two things. So the five-six in Claire with the community liaison, those are basically functioning like community schools. At Johnson Park, where 35% of our children are free and reduced lunch, the nurse's office has a washing machine because some of those children come into school and they smell and other kids make fun of them. And so the nurse's office, the community liaison's office, they all provide food for these kids. So some of the community school aspects are happening. And I just wanted to say, with regard to the five-six school that's now tabled, one of the main reasons I supported a five-six school at Valley Road was because it was a deliberate choice by the district to put resources and services in the neighborhoods that needed the most.
Okay, thank you. As an effort to expose students to racial literacy, school has implemented an optional racial literacy course at PHS, implemented a unit on race in U.S. One, and a focus on Princeton history with race in third grade. Evaluate the current implementation of racial literacy education in the district. How would you work to improve this implementation in order to expose all students, faculty, and staff to racial literacy?
Yes, and I'm proud of all three of those initiatives. It has really been unprecedented, the way race is being spoken about in our schools. It is not enough. So what, when the racial literacy class was brought to student achievement for approval, number one, it was an idea of students. So it's two incredibly innovative and terrific educators who brought that course to fruition, but it was students who had the idea. And anything that students suggest, we know that that is really important to have in our schools. I think the question has come up, should every single student at Princeton High School take that course? And that would be a conversation that would come from our superintendent and our assistant superintendent for curriculum. But I think the idea is that having some type of racial literacy requirement before graduation, we have to think about what students we are educating and how we want to send them into the world. So I have to tell you, at the opposite end of the spectrum, I was a third-grade parent last year and went on the new and improved Princeton history tour, and that is a much more realistic picture of the history of this town. And it was a wonderful, engaging, difficult to hear at times, but really a terrific advancement that we have made. I also think this unit on race, that we are sure that every single student at the beginning of the year in that, in U.S. history, that that's been a really positive change as well. It's not enough, but these are steps that have been taken in the last, within the last few years, and I'm very proud of all of them.
Racial literacy should part of the, inherent part of U.S. history. There should be a unit on it, and if the question comes up of whether everybody should participate in it, I think that's a moot question. Everybody has to take history, everybody should understand the whole of history, not just parts of it.
Exactly.
If there are kids who want to specialize and take a full course in racial literacy, I think that's a good idea. Let them study what their history is, let them study what's important to them, let them do their independent studies themselves to find out what's, what might be seen to other children and things other kids don't know. Let them then make a program themselves for the whole school, either an active program, an active participatory program, or at least some, a film or a play or an auditorium presentation so that they can then communicate what's important to them. Let them have enough to share, that's really the core.
Thank you. So I think regular and ongoing feedback is critically important, particularly at the high school level, because you can rely on those students directly, and we haven't done enough of that. And then all of a sudden, we have an equity audit and everybody is shocked. So we need a program, a regular program, to survey and communicate with the students. And we're not surprised when something comes up like this. So we're working proactively on a regular basis. One of the things, when I first became involved, that surprised me was that the students had done their own survey at the high school. And that was really one of the few talk events that I could dig my teeth into to say what credibly is going on in the high school, what do they say their needs are? And so I think we need to be in regular dialogue with the students, certainly at the high school and middle school level, to understand their needs, their concerns, without waiting for a formal process through something like the Stanford Assessment or the Equity Audit. Because we need to be able to respond in real time to issues that are going on in our community, issues that are going on in our school district, and not wait.
As an effort to expose students to racial literacy, the school district has implemented an optional racial literacy course at PHS, implemented a unit on race in U.S. One, and a focus on Princeton history with race in the third grade. Evaluate the current implementation of racial literacy education in the district. How would you, how would you work to improve this implementation in order to expose all students, faculty, and staff to racial literacy?
Okay, thank you. So we, the district administered this Stanford survey in 2016 because we were hearing that kids were really stressed. We had a suicide in September of that year, and so when we got the results from the testing, we weren't surprised. When we, now, in the district, we've also had incidents of bias over the years, and so when we asked for an audit to be done on our equity issues, we weren't surprised. And so I want to say, I do support, I'm very impressed with the racial literacy course. The two teachers who are leading it work really well together, and they really bring a love and show their students what it means to be culturally responsive. So I would support, I did talk to the teachers and I asked them what they thought of having the class mandatory, and they weren't too happy about that because they want kids in their class who want to be there. However, the superintendent is considering, and the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, they're considering some kind of course to put in place that every student's required to take about race. In addition, we amended the third-grade Princeton curriculum before there was never any knowledge or discussion or information about the history segregation played in Princeton, had in Princeton. We now have middle school units that include a focus on, sorry, social justice. Thank you.
This is another, obviously, complicated topic. So I'm glad that there are some efforts underway, and I'm glad that there might be a course to help focus on racial literacy. But the students of color I talked to, and also students along the gender spectrum and the LGBT community, they don't see themselves in most of the curriculum. So I'm not sure one course is the solution. I think that the, you know, the district really needs to think about aspects of the whole curriculum. History is, and that was my major, and I'm trying to unlearn some of the things I learned. It largely celebrated white men who were perfect and built this country. People like Woodrow Wilson, celebrated, beloved, revered, put on a pedestal at the university. And now, 80 years later, the university is wrestling with, you know, his racist past and the fact that he's a complicated individual, but he's still, you know, a white man at a time when all of our history was largely driven by white men. So there has to be a way to look at the whole curriculum and help our diverse students, diverse in all ways, not just in race, see themselves in the curriculum and have a way of talking about history and, you know, the Western works and maybe non-Western works in a way that broadens their perspectives.
Any candidate like to add?
I'd love to add. I just want to share two collaborations related to this topic. So our library media specialists have worked together to update the, update our school libraries, and that has been very intentional to ensure that students do see themselves in the books that they can check out. Again, we're not done with this work, but it has started. Also, back to professional development, and I know we've talked a lot about partnerships. The Historical Society of Princeton helped us pro bono to create this new third-grade curriculum for the walking tour, and that included a lot of work for teachers in how to have these conversations. So we need to support our teachers in being able to have these conversations with students at all levels, not just at the high school, and I think that that third-grade example was a good start. Again, we're not done, but we've started.
This is slightly tangential, but I think that it's important. If we define achievement as the ability to take more AP courses, where are the resources for those who don't take APs and who just want a good education like we have? The Stanford survey shows an emphasis on accelerated courses and APs actually leads to more and more students stressed and then even to cheating. So there are more cheating among high school students and numerous seniors than among the sophomores and juniors. I remember my granddaughter, who just started at Barner, said that until she was in 10th grade, she took courses at the school that she was at, she took courses for the regular program, and there she was taking eight courses at a time like our kids here. Then she enrolled in the International Baccalaureate Program for her last two years, and she said it was much better for her, that she learned better because the courses were cut down to only four, and each course was double the time that she had given before. So instead of teaching her tricks of the jacks of all twos, it might be good to give them, focus on, teach them how to focus on something and learn how to do it well. And I think this covers all, all groups, minorities and minorities, majority.
I just wanted to add something, just going back to the court, it was curriculum, right? And so I agree that one course is not enough, and just to be clear, we have a superintendent who really loves all kids, and he really wants everyone to be treated equitably. And so I could go through all the changes that have been made, but I'm not going to bore you, but you should, people should know there are systemic changes underway to address the issues that have taken decades and festered. So just to be clear on that, thank you.
So the one comment I would make, I agree that we do have a wonderful superintendent who's got a wonderful background in education, but the one thing that's concerned me is he spent 100% of his time on anything but education. So he spent time on the facilities and built facilities referendum and out trying to sell this plan when I think we should have set up more than a year ago a Citizens Facilities Advisory Board and could have built community support around a referendum and let the superintendent educate. So one of my roles is to have the superintendent go back to education and just spend his time on these important educational issues and bring in community professionals on the facilities and finances.
Okay. All right, we are moving on to the next question. So for those who are unaware, so maybe for the audience, there So for those who are unaware, so maybe for the audience, there were changes made to the PHS schedule this year. So these scheduled changes include, and I'm very much condensing them because there's a lot of changes, but shifting the start time thirty minutes later, rotating the order of the periods, and implementing a modified block schedule where some days students have all eight classes and other days they only meet with four of their classes for longer periods. I think that's an adequate explanation. So my question for the candidates is evaluate the current efforts to improve student wellness, such as later start times and schedule changes. What policies would you work to implement in order to protect student well-being? And we are going to begin with candidate Clerman.
You guys are really coming with good questions.
I think it's important.
Well, I'm really impressed with the things that Desi has told us and the things that the other candidates mentioned also. There's a lot of what's going on, and we need to appreciate all of it. And Steve Cockerney is a really nice guy, and I know that he really cares about kids, and I would like to see him working on what matters to him and to us and to the students as well. But I do think that it's important that we start later. In fact, I read in The Times several years ago, an article about an experiment in Minneapolis where they discovered that the melatonin doesn't wake up or does wake up at the right, at different times for adolescents than for adults, and that they need to get up later that they couldn't, they shouldn't come to school at seven o'clock in the morning. So I'm glad that we're doing that. But I think the day could be shorter. I think that it should be less complicated. I don't understand why it shouldn't be complicated. I think it's not good, I think it'd be far better to focus on something, as I said before, than to try to do everything. I think it's too complicated to have eight courses, and I would just simplify it. Thank you.
So I think the new start time, of course, is great. I'm very concerned because the kids are only getting six and a half hours of sleep per night, and I think the block scheduling is overly complex and makes the students think about what course do I have, what period, and that requires an extra effort to manage. May we marry that maybe we should have seven rather than eight classes and maybe a study period that allows them to get a jump on their homework. Well, let me tell you what they say they want. And they say that what they want is more homework-free weekends. That was a 73% response. They say they want to lengthen the lunch break. That was a 70% response. They want to implement a test quiz schedule to limit the number of tests and quizzes on any one day, and they want a mandatory free period. And I agree with that. So the last thing they wanted to assign projects and do a mid-year and final exams, 56%. So I think we need to listen to the students. I think that the fact that, you know, they're very stressed out, they're not sleeping. I think if you walk in every day and you think success is five APs and going to Princeton University, then almost everyone is a failure. So I think that's a terrible, terrible standard. And so we have to have individualized goals. And really, I see this disconnect with a wonderful mission of joy and purpose, and yet when you see the results, you realize there's a huge disconnect. And one of my goals is to close that disconnect between our mission and the results.
So my first year on the board was 2016, and my favorite event as a board member is the Princeton High School graduation. And they, there are three speakers who are elected by their classes to speak. And I was listening, and this one student said, "I can't wait to get out of here. It's been so stressful. I can't wait to go to college and relax." And I remember thinking, wow, like, I took APs in high school. I was not stressed, I didn't stay up late, I didn't, nothing. So clearly, there's something wrong. Then, three months later, there was a suicide. The district knew there were steps we had to take. So we hired the best in the business, Stanford, to administer the Challenge Success Survey. And again, we weren't surprised by the results, but once they're in black and white, it was very startling. And so we wanted to make change across the board. Basically, our kids weren't engaged in school. So part of the reason for the rotating block schedule is so that kids aren't doing school, so that there was more time for them to be engaged throughout the day and more time, less homework, because if some days they only have four classes, they're not going to have homework for eight classes. And also in that schedule, every six days, every student has one free period. And so it cannot be scheduled because even now, if a child has a free period, they want to schedule it. So this is something that there's no, you can't schedule something for one period. With regard to the later start time, that was unequivocal. The American Academy of Pediatrics and several institutions recommend clearly that that will only have a good impact on children, and I'll come back later.
So I agree completely with one of Dan's points, which is that we really need to listen to the students. And the only thing that's not great about the Stanford study is we didn't do it five years ago or ten years ago. These are great kids. By the time they're getting to high school, they're, you know, smart, they're sophisticated. And I think hearing their voices more is something that should guide us as much as, you know, educational theory at the moment. So hearing the kids' voices is absolutely critical. The later start time is great. I think a full hour would have been greater, and wish we could have gone all the way instead of kind of chopping it in half. And maybe we can still get there because all the melatonin, all the studies would push you to say an hour's better, a half hour's better, but an hour's better than a half hour. The new schedule, I think I like it. You know, I see it through the eyes of my kid. I'm a big believer in the block schedule. Everything I've read says it enhances learning outcomes. Right now, we have a schedule that feels a little bit like Dr. Frankenstein put it together. Some days it's this, some days it's that. And I hope that if we're hearing good things about the block schedule, if the faculty are getting more comfortable with it, and ones I've talked to are, that we can go there in full and really say, the 21st century, 2019, we can make a fundamental change in our curriculum. I like the reduction in homework. I wish they could somehow reduce time here. So we parents still have to battle that. The one other thing I would say that I think would be great for the kids is if we could have more collaborative learning and a little less of the old style chalk and talk, take a test. There have to be, it's the 21st century, we need to learn differently, we need to engage differently, and for that you do need changes to the facilities.
So I'm very pleased with the work so far. As Duncan mentioned, I think engagement, 12% of our kids on the Challenge Success Survey said they work hard and they enjoy the work. 10% say they're not engaged. And then everybody else is somewhere in the middle, with 49% just doing school. So as a teacher, I can tell you, a rotating schedule is invaluable. If a child does not grade in math and they have to come to math every day at 8:25, that's not a recipe for success. We did that for many years, and our teachers are terrific, and our students worked hard, but this is known to be an improvement. I'll also say whoever is elected to the board, whichever three of us, will learn compromise is the name of the game. And we too, Brian, were not initially satisfied with 30 minutes. We wanted it to be longer, and it was a compromise that led us there. We wanted to do something for students, and perhaps in the future, we will extend the later start, but this was, this was a great start. The schedule was created by a belt committee that was made up of administrators, teachers, students, and parents, and I think that's part of the success. It is a modified block. Interestingly, they told us in student achievement that if you go to block schedule, if everything is a block schedule, there's actually less interaction with students and their teachers because they only see them every other day. So I thought that was, as a teacher, I had never considered that, and I thought that was fascinating. Something else I'll highlight about the new schedule is that we have something called Tiger Time once every six days. That is time, not just the study hall where everyone has a free period, but this is Tiger Time where clubs can meet, teachers are available for extra help. This is, this is what students had been asking us for, and there wasn't anything in our former schedule to allow for that to happen.
I'd like to recommend this report to everybody. This is the basis of much of our discussion here. The Challenge Success or Challenge to Success, Stanford Survey of Adolescent School Experience Report for Princeton High. Apparently, it was the questions were asked by the students so that although the calculation was professional, the people who actually did the work to put it together are students.
They weren't, they weren't.
Tell me what sort of the story was and what's happening. I understand that, but what was the participation level of the students?
It was 90% participation level, but that wasn't put together by students.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was just told that this evening, so I thought that would be great, but okay.
The students had done one of this prior. The students, those student board reps, the student board reps had done one, but not scientifically calculated.
Okay, so at any rate, it's very legible, very readable, and it reads well enough for students to understand too. So I think one of the things that might be fun for you to look at is how students spend their spare time when they have the complicated schedules that they have, the difficult schedules. One-third of them spend their time, their free time texting, emailing, and chatting online. One-fourth of them on Instagram or some other similar sites. One-half of them are watching TV or Netflix. And, but as far as what personal stuff that they're able to do as opposed to electronic entertainment.
Sorry.
Okay, we shall read.
Anyone else? I would just add that we're only six weeks into the new schedule. So I look out here and I see some high school students and teachers, and I think it's our responsibility as a board to continue to go back and assess how this is. We may think it's going well by certain measures. People have come and told us, kids are looking awake, teachers are welcoming kids at the door, it's really great for kids, even if for some adults, actually, the change in time has been difficult. But we need to go back and ask and make sure that it is what we think it is.
And I just wanted to add, our high school administration has really taken on this project, and I'm so very impressed with how these changes have been implemented so quickly.
Anyone else? From personal experience and from what I've heard from other students, when a student goes to the district or to their school, principal, etc., administration, it often feels like it's the student versus the school versus the student and the school versus the problem that they were not. How can we encourage students to speak up and their voice and voice their concerns? Evaluate the administration's current engagement with student voices and provide an overview of your ideas to improve this dynamic.
Starting with candidate.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think that the Board of Education has to set the right tone, and is critically important, in that when a student or a teacher comes with a problem, that is, that engagement is welcoming. And so that's, that's the tone, and the tone has to come from the Board of Education. So that would be the first thing that I would do, and I would give students a way to reach the Board directly, maybe through a 1-800 number or some confidential way so that problems that were unresolved, racial incidents or any serious problem that was unresolved, are resolved in a non-satisfactory way, could come to the Board of Education's attention, and the Board of Education could step in and take action. I think the worst situation is we have an environment that does not welcome problems or communication, and it doesn't respond quickly to incidents when they do arise.
Candidate.
So I think children should have a voice. We're doing this for the kids, and so it's very important to hear from them. Something that occurred to me when I was reading the Equity Audit was that parent guardian voice is an essential element in creating systemic equity. And basically, the report just says that for both individual student success and systemic equity, it's important that the district hear from and be responsive to all parents and guardians in an equitable way. And I think, and to that add students. And so I think that is something the district needs to work on. We have implemented not a hotline, but something on our website so people can report things. People are very concerned about reporting things, they're worried about retaliation against their student, and I can understand that. But I think at the high school, students have a voice. I think we need to work on helping kids to advocate for themselves right in elementary school. It's a very important tool to have, and it should just be focused on at the high school.
Back to student voices. I think the students have voices. I just don't think people have been listening to them enough. So I'm not sure asking the students to speak louder or speak more often is the first place we start. I think we have to start with the administration and the structure. You know, these schools, the structures tend to be hierarchical, some tend to be patriarchal and very sort of a command and control, work your way up. And that isn't usually the way a modern organization thrives. They're much more open, there are fewer layers, there are more opportunities for people to talk. So our administrators should be, you know, talking with the students as often as possible. They should be soliciting their views, they should be listening to their views. And I actually think that at the elementary school, they do. It seems to work pretty well. I'm not sure the kids are all that demanding at that level, but I also think that at JW, the district's doing a better job of listening to students and trying to make some changes. I think, I think the high school is where the most work is needed and where the students are most frustrated that what seems obvious to them and what they feel that they've said has not been heard.
Again, also back to improving communication. So again, we have this document on our website that does show the chain of command. And so when a concern comes to us as a board member, for example, we encourage the parent or the student to follow the chain of command, which includes going to the teacher, going to this administrator, potentially to the superintendent. And if it has gone unresolved, then to go to the board. But I think that part of this is that we want to make sure that teacher, that students know teachers care about them and if there's an need to go to. So the Challenge Success, another takeaway, is that 61% of students felt that they had an adult in the building to go to, a teacher, a counselor, a coach, but only 61%. So four out of 10 students don't necessarily. I think we've done, there have been some great initiatives. The community period at JW, which we've talked about briefly, is every Wednesday afternoon. Students meet in groups of 15 with a teacher who they may or may not have. It's five sixth graders, five seventh graders, and five eighth graders together with another teacher. So for example, for my son, whose community teacher is a teacher he currently has, but there are sixth and seventh graders in that room for whom it's, it's a new adult for them to know. We also initiated Meet the Board sessions in the past few years, and we had a Meet the Board session once at Princeton High School because enterprising high school students, such as these students, said to us, "Come listen." And I think we need to do more of that at the K to 8 level, because I agree. I admire elementary school students, children, and they have a voice, and they want us to listen to them. So I think more can be done.
I'm very interested to hear that the students feel that when they try to speak to the schools and the schools do not respond, because that was the feeling of the community as well. So I think what the problem is, again, policy versus practice. The school board is not autonomous. It's supposed to be responsive to the community. Education is meant to be responsive to the needs of children. One of the great things about Maori is that instead of telling children what they're ready to learn, you find out when children are ready to learn, and then you make it possible for them to learn it. Same thing should be true. Education is meant to be responsive, and I hear from parents, as I go around knocking on doors, I hear that from parents that they, not all, but often feel that when they ask a question, it's not answered. That's not right. The best way to do things is to listen to what the parents have to say. Sometimes you can shorten that process by going to the teacher and to the counselor and to the administration and to the superintendent by saying, "Yeah, this is what we need to do, and we can do it together."
So I just wanted to add one thing. The district, clearly, we have work to do, but I was walking into the superintendent's office one day, and there were three high school students sitting in there. And I thought to myself, when I was in high school, did I know who the superintendent was, and would he have sat down with me? And I don't think so. So I think we're doing a good job in listening to kids. We can do better. But I think student voices are heard and respected.
I'm just worried that there are too many links in that chain of command and that especially for our Black and Latino students, you're asking a lot when you ask them to reach from link to link to link, especially when they're not seeing themselves. You know, we need more diversity in our administration. You know, we need more diversity in our administration, and the kids, and especially those kids, need more advocates, because that is a steep climb to go up, to ask kids to be that strong of an advocate for themselves. We just have to do better.
Can I just add on? I just wanted to say, when we have an incident that comes to the Board of Education, everyone knows it should have been dealt with better before it got to us. And so what we hope happens is that the administrators or teachers understand what the Board position is and deal with it correctly the first time.
And just to clarify too, I think the chain of command is really important for parents when reporting concerns. We hope students have an adult in the building they can go to. And they, it's not certainly my intention as a board member that they have to climb all of those, all of those steps. I would also say one other improvement is that ninth graders now have a relationship with their guidance counselor before they go to the high school. I was reminded of this today, actually, Daphne was speaking about it. Now they meet their guidance counselor in eighth grade. So that alleviates some concern and anxiety about starting high school if before you even go, you know you've met a friendly face who's there to welcome you. Anyone else?
Should I go again?
I would just say that we've got some great people in the guidance office. If you haven't been into the high school in a long time, that is part of the school that needs a lot of work. When kids go in, there are often lines, they don't feel there's sufficient confidentiality, there are real barriers to getting to the person and having the conversation when you're triaging in public. And I believe that's in question one, which is really good news for everybody.
Clearly, the schools are doing a tremendous amount of stuff, and I'm really appreciative of the way Daps is able to line it all up for us. I just want to say that I think these are good things, and they all need to be done from more than one point of view, from the point of view of how policies are set, and then the point of view of how they're implemented.
Excellent, okay, we are going to transition to audience questions, so this is very exciting and a little nerve-wracking, but we will see how this works out.
And please allow for a few brief moments for us to organize ourselves.
Okay, what we're gonna do is an excellent idea from the candidates. So we are gonna have the candidates give their closing statements now, and we will, as we figure out what the heck we are doing. So if we can start with, how about we do opposite of opening statements? So can we start with candidate McDonald and go down the line this way, just for fun?
Hi, sure, I'll try and do real briefly. I want to, even though we're gonna keep going, thank the students, the YW, and Not in Our Town for putting on this first half of the evening, and thank you for the second half as well. I guess I just want to say to the students, because I know this is geared in many ways to the students who've asked the questions, that you can make a difference by being engaged citizens. You can make a difference in our community, you can make a difference in the country, and you can make a difference in the world. And you have to. You have to get involved, you have to stay involved, because that's the only way democracy works, and it's the only way we're gonna figure out what's going on in this globe where there's some significant challenges. And then I guess for those that can vote, I ask for your support. For those who are not old enough to vote, I ask for them to speak with their parents and help engage them and inform them. I mean, you've got five, five people, and they should do their homework and try to learn about the five candidates. And hopefully, they will think long and hard and then reach out and vote for McDonald in column M. And if any students want to get involved and volunteer, you can reach me at mcdonaldforpps@gmail.com. Thank you.
Well, I would also like to thank Not in Our Town and our students and the YW for the forum. I'm running for reelection so that I may continue to contribute to the great changes happening in the district that have benefited all of our students. I'm very proud of the work that has been done with regard to equity and social justice, but also know there's much work to be done. I'm hopeful that over the next three years, we will continue to make meaningful strides towards equity for all students, including through programming and care to close the achievement gap, representation of underserved groups in higher-level courses, and all-around respect, empathy, and compassion for all. As a board member, I believe I have demonstrated that I have been a good steward of the jewel that is the Princeton Public Schools. As a Board of Education candidate, I commit to continuing to be a good steward for our schools. I believe my accomplishments and those of my colleague Betsy Baddeau, on behalf of the students and staff over the past three years, are a good indication of how we will perform over the next three years. I respectfully request your support for our reelection to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Number one, I just want to say how excited I am for the educational opportunities we have in our community. I think living in a university town particularly, but Princeton, is an incredible opportunity to engage not only the significant financial resources that they have generously committed to the town, but also the non-financial resources, and I don't think we've leveraged them enough. I think some of the problems are, go beyond the capabilities of the school district, and we need to involve the municipality, the university, and non-profit organizations as well. I think if we try to do them alone, we won't succeed as much as we would succeed if we partnered with people. And the community school idea is a great one, and I'm surprised we haven't done that before. But again, it's, it's a concept that requires the participation of the entire community, not just, not just the school system. So I think that is a great opportunity to close the achievement gap. And, but one of the things that I've been focused on, which I think is really important, is still affordability. I mean, diversity is our strength, and what I've been hearing over and over again from a diverse community is, you're gonna drive us out of town. And so I think as we approach all of these problems, we have to balance the needs for affordability among all of our citizens. Thank you.
I'd like to go back to a philosophical, quite view on this. And I think we should talk about, since we came here to talk about discrimination and equity, let's talk about discrimination in terms of history, which marks both our successes and the mistakes we shouldn't repeat. The Valley Road School, for instance, embodies Princeton's own history of struggle with integration and segregation. Unlike the university, we have few public buildings that loudly or proudly recall any of our public history. Let's be sure that our history of segregation and integration won't be reduced to the tokenism of an isolated archway, torn from the whole when we demolished a Valley Road School, which is what we've been showing in the architect's drawings so far. My original closing statement then was that lack of equity is one, a natural problem that we can actually solve at home for ourselves. Let's be clear on what's needed. If diversity counts, correct the needs to reflect that. Let's encourage independent study by underscoring the interest of minorities, which may not be for entry into the white world, but for developing your own culture, ultimately important to us all. Most of all, let's consider the whole community. A great building may be inspiration and a comfort to all to work in it, but it's not, but not if it's a reminder of those left out because we are unwilling to answer their questions. My thanks to all who are here, my thanks to all here who support the proposed law, and to all who, like me, want greater clarity and communication, and to my colleagues for their contributions.
Thank you. In closing, I hope my work in the Board of Education over the past three years has proven I'm committed to this work. I am willing to put the time in to do the work well, I remain focused on the needs of students, and I've been good at bringing different people together to consider what it is our students need. I'd like to thank all of the groups we thank, the YWCA, Not in Our Town, Princeton, and our high school students for engaging us in this discussion, and for ensuring that every candidate for the Board of Education has familiarized themselves with the challenge success and equity audit results. We will not truly improve as a district if we're not equitable and welcoming to all. I also second the message, I think it was Brian who said to the high school students, "Get involved." As a middle school student in central Massachusetts, I wrote my school committee when arts education money was threatening to be cut, and I wrote to my school committee then, and now, many years later, I am on the receiving end of those emails. So, so get involved. As you heard this evening, my work in the Board has been improved, informed by my background and skills. I'm an educator, a collaborator, a problem solver, and a parent. And finally, I like this work, and I'd like to continue to do the work with my colleague Daphne Kendall. The Board is better off with both of us, and our diverse perspectives and experiences have led to a very productive first term working together. I am position L on the ballot, she is position I, first and fourth, or fourth and first. And please make an informed vote when you, when you do go to the polls on November 6th. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to do a complete change of pace and go to audience questions. So I'm starting to feel very long, but we have some really excellent audience questions. We're just gonna do maybe two or three, and then I think we'll wrap up. So our question is, do you think that our health curriculum should be changed in the wake of the Me Too movement? And we are going to start with candidate Kendall.
So I think, yes, like Brian said, our history, our curriculum, the history that we teach, our curriculum is very patriarchal. And I was reminded today of something that we did on the board last year, and I think Andrew Spalwell said that things that happen, you won't remember. Even when they're very important, you'll forget about it. And so one of the things that Betsy and I did together that I'm very proud of is that we had the dress code at JW revised, and we had it revised because it was out of date. Girls were not allowed to show their bra straps, they did the same measure, they did the measure where your shorts couldn't go high, lower than where your hands, or higher than where your hand is. And so we worked together, and again, that was brought to us by students. When my son was in seventh grade, friends of girls who were friends with him started a campaign called Free the Nipple, because they were not allowed, they were not allowed to wear bikinis to the class party at CP pool. And sure enough, I went and I looked at pictures of my son, and his stomach was hanging out. So that's how we became involved and with that issue. And Betsy and I both agreed that no one, if, if no one can have their stomach out, then the boys need to wear shirts too. And so we revised the dress code, it was outdated, their head covers were allowed, which had religious issues. And also, we had children that don't identify with the gender to which they were born, and so we changed that too. We now have a very progressive dress code at JW. And so just to add to that, I did look at this year's seventh grade party at CP, and I did see bikinis, so I was very happy.
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. So do you think our health curriculum should be changed in the wake of the Me Too movement?
A lot of things should change in the wake of the Me Too movement. I'm not sure it's just something that's combined to the health department. This is much bigger than just human health. This is about individual rights, it's about mutual respect, it's about what it means to be a member of the community. It means, you know, it means understanding what consent means. And anything that the schools can do to make progress in those areas would be great. As parents, we've tried to engage our kids in conversations, particularly on the topic of consent. They tend to want those to be very short conversations, so we just keep trying more often. But this is a fundamental issue for our society, and anything the schools can do would be most welcome.
I agree, I think it would be a great opportunity to educate all students regarding appropriate interactions. And kids will engage often with one another on this topic much longer than they'll engage with us. Our health teacher at JW, Amy Worgo, I just, a little shout out to Mrs. Worgo, I'm not sure how she does it, with what she covers with our students, but I certainly would support that. I actually also would love to look at health and how we're offering health cable, but specifically at the elementary schools. In some of our schools, nurses teach health, some gym teachers teach health, some other teachers teach health. Perhaps it may be time to look at bringing in one teacher or two teachers who are really focused on health in the elementary levels and split them among our schools. That's one idea, it doesn't reflect the views of the Board, but it reflects my own views. But I do think, yes, I agree with Brian, anything we can do to help our students navigate this world is really important.
The Me Too movement is changing how people talk and how people think. I'm tempted to ask how many women in the audience have experienced sexual harassment? Because this is actually a good question. I know that I've been attempted, that I was, I was the victim of an attempted rape at least twice, and various things have happened throughout my life that I would say were inexcusable on the part of men. But I think that it's true, as Brian says, that when parents try to talk to kids about this, it's very short, but when kids talk to each other, it's very long. So the best way to do this is to address this, is to engage the kids in conversations about what they feel is appropriate. And I think the question of short shorts and hanging out bellies in class is not really good. I think that what they need to do is sit down and think on themselves and decide what the criteria are for a classroom that is not a distraction. I've heard boys complain that girls are too attractive, and it's their problem. And that's actually the problem that we have in many Arab countries, is the women dress totally covered because they don't want the men to have to sin by looking at them. Well, we have a similar problem here when kids, when girls are wearing their short shorts to school, and the boys are not allowed to do that, but the girls aren't. The girls are sexy, but the boys aren't. It just doesn't make sense. So again, the best thing to do with that is for the students to talk to each other and to do it, to come up to consensus as to what's appropriate for the school, and you can have a dress code that everybody agrees to.
Thank you. I must say I was a little surprised when the hashtag Me Too Movement came out, because many of these issues, I worked for Merrill Lynch Investment Management and other leading financial firms, and were sued, quite frankly, every time they had an incident. So as a business leader in those organizations, we had to take steps very, very quickly to do, bring in consultants, do sensitivity training. And I think for many organizations that are well-run and run and high-quality organizations, they've taken a leadership role, and it's worked, and it's worked well. So I think we can learn something from that. And I think many of our companies, Apple Computer among others, when a community or a city, for example, is disrespectful or does not promote equity, there's boycott, there's a public price to pay for cities and companies and governments that act inappropriately. And I think that's a very, very good thing. I'm not getting into the whole dressing, but clearly, you know, people need to dress for what is appropriate in the environment they're in. I do think, speaking of health, which is a passion of mine, that we need to focus a lot more on nutrition, both for mental health and physical health. And I lost two sisters to cancer quite suddenly and abruptly, and so I changed my diet, and I exercise regularly and have no need for medications and other things. And I think mental health is a clear link between bad nutrition and bad mental health. And exercise is a wonderful, wonderful way to reduce stress.
So I just wanted to add, so yes, I think the health curriculum should be updated to teach the kids more about consent. I think we discussed that. But just like racism, I think these issues are community issues. And when we have a sense of bias in our community, the first reaction is always towards the schools. And a lot of times, they happen in the schools. But some things go on that it seems are taught at home. And I think it's a community discussion, just like with Me Too, that we're all in this together. And the mission statement is to raise kids to lead lives of joy and purpose in a multicultural world. And if they're not tolerant of others, and they're not respectful of others, then we're not fulfilling that mission.
Onto our next question.
Yes, go ahead, shortly.
Yeah, Daps' remark about health reminded me that I hadn't had a chance to tell you the rest of this survey information that I thought was pertinent. So... So if exercise is one of the best ways to reduce stress, it turns out that the percentage of students who exercise is less than 25%, less than a quarter, and the rest of them are spending their time with other activities like electronic stuff. And then finally, what I think is really important for students is that the percentage of students who read for pleasure is close to 10%.
And if I could just add one piece as well, very quickly, I think we have to help parents have this conversation. I think, just like many other topics such as use of technology, parents are looking to the schools, even though we are not the only one having the conversation. I agree with Daphne, it's a community responsibility, but I think it's one that we could take the responsibility to start having this conversation with parents.
Thank you. Did you know that to register and play sports, the students have to register online, but because of a lack of computers or access to the internet, and also the language barrier is not offered in Spanish, therefore many students are not able to play sports because they're not able to register? And because the deadline is way before the start of school, nobody is able to help these students and families. How can the district alleviate this problem?
Next, we'll begin with candidate Dye.
I think we've covered this ground somewhat before, and there are great initiatives in place with respect to equipment, but this is just not acceptable to have members of our community that we can't effectively communicate with. We should have to have forums, we should do everything that can be done to engage every member of the community and make them feel that they're, you know, a full part, and have every opportunity that every other kid has. And if language is a barrier, or technology is a barrier, or time is a barrier, or uncertainty about, you know, how to go about doing this, we have to address it, we have to eliminate it.
This is unfortunately exactly the type of example we talk about in the Equity Committee when we talk about barriers to access. However, it is one that there has been some improvement on. So I got that email over the summer about fall registration as a parent, and I forwarded that to administrators in the district immediately and said, who's working with the students who don't have internet access, whose parents don't speak English? How are we working to ensure that these students are signing up? It's my understanding that the liaisons at every building are reaching out. I can tell you, at the CP, the after-school club program, we have a wonderful liaison at CP who works tirelessly, I'm looking at Katie because she runs that now, but Tracy Goldberg works tirelessly with families to reach out to them if they need these forms in other languages and help the students sign up. So I would say we have to ensure that that's happening. But on our last Equity Committee agenda, October 4th, we did look at this Equipment Assistance Forum, and some questions for discussions were, how do parents who don't speak English or don't have internet access get this form? And then also, the form asks about, is your child on free or reduced lunch? Well, they may not be on free or reduced lunch, but they may be experiencing financial difficulties, and how do we get at that information and help families? So I'm not sure this is solved yet, but this is absolutely something that is not acceptable until it is solved.
Communication is critical at all levels and at all subjects, in all areas. If language is the barrier, there are ways to deal with that. I would suggest that, in fact, I did suggest to the communities, to the school, that when they need to communicate with the entire community, they should talk directly to the people who in each neighborhood have an email network that they routinely send messages to. In the case of the Spanish community, if they don't have the computers to get the email with, I'm sure that there are ways to have community trees of communication where one person talks to another person and talks to another person. There's all kinds of communication that goes on informally that way, and it should include the formal information that the schools need to communicate, but it needs to come from the schools to begin with. There needs to be initiation of that kind of direct communication, and there needs to be communication, again, between the people in the school who can put the story into the language of the people, and then it can be carried on, you know, that.
So what I've noticed, and I've been involved with the school really for many years because of the children that are in the school, but very closely and passionately involved in the last eight months, and what I've noticed is the school board and the district has trouble prioritizing. Fact is, we have a ton of money, we have almost $100 million a year to spend. If our kids can't get access to a computer to sign up for an athletic program, that means that our money and our resources are not well-prioritized and they're misspent. And I was shocked recently when we learned about the mold problem at the school, because maintenance should be a major priority, a major focus of our effort, and yet the last six months was spent much too much time fighting about whether we should acquire and renovate a $13 million property for buses and administration. And the superintendent has spent 100% of his time to be there. Because I've been with him most of the time. Because I've been with him, he's done over 40 meetings. We've been with him most of the time.
So you're wasting from the, when he goes into his office, all of these other people.
Can we just, I apologize, so we'll have time to talk to the candidates afterwards.
So he's spent a lot of his time, and the Board has said he's spending 100% of his time on that. And Board President Patrick Sullivan, at the most recent Board of Education meeting, said we have to get our superintendent back to education. So it's been a full-time job for him this past year. And so, again, I want to say this on a positive note, we have plenty of resources, there should be no excuse for kids not to be able to sign up for an educational program.
So what happened with the sports registration this summer was very unfortunate, it's not acceptable. The district is spending a lot of time on equity. I think what happened was, you know, we've gone paperless because we want to be sustainable. And families, grade four through 12, have access to, are given a computer and Wi-Fi access. But even so, I speak English, and I have a computer, and I did not complete the registration correct. So I think, you know, there are things that can be changed, but absolutely, it's not acceptable. And I think steps, everyone knows that steps are being taken to ensure that we're out ahead of it next year.
And I'll just add, and not just next year as well, every winter, yeah, I mean, the next, we're about to sign students up for the next term, which is, I'm just thinking. The other thing I'll say is, that's one barrier to access, but something else could be transportation. Are students signing up? So maybe, you know, registering is difficult, we're trying to make that better, but what if you can't get a ride home from the middle school play at 4:30? Are you going to go out for the play? So we're looking at other solutions that we may need, such as late buses and other types of solutions.
Okay, so then we are going to move on to our final question of the evening. So the last question is, how would you balance the benefits of restorative justice and the demands of some community members for punishment of intolerance by students? And for this question, we are going to begin with candidate Bagley, I guess.
So let me just write this down, restorative justice, if you could repeat that.
With the demands of some community members for punishment of intolerance by students.
Well, one thing that became very clear when the Policy Committee worked on this last year is that the specific punishments that a child receives is not public. So if people would like to, when an unfortunate incident happens, they say, what happened? What happened to the child? And whether it's restorative justice, or if it ended up with some type of a suspension, we can't legally, nor should we, say what that was. But what we should have in our code of conduct is a list of options that are carefully considered not only by our administrators and our teachers, but parents and community members as well. So we went through that, unfortunately, a few times last year, where people were really feeling like nothing had happened because they hadn't heard about what had happened to punish a child, when that's actually not information that we're able to share.
How many people think that spanking a child is a good idea? How many? Okay, there are different ways to punish things, there are different ways to resolve them. I think the term punishment is not a really positive term. When I was a teacher, I was taught that the best way to deal with a child who misbehaves is timeout. Okay, so what else besides timeout? Do you just isolate the child in a room and then forget it? Or do you put the child in the room and wait until the time that you know that is a good time to actually talk to that child and say, what was the problem? Let's work this out. I think this needs to be done in all cases.
So I think pretty much we should ignore the demands of revengeful members of our community for punishment, for punishment's sake. My understanding is that there were 51 suspensions last year, and 82% of those were for predetermined situations, so that there was really no judgment involved, and that means that only about 18%, where a discipline committee had to make some sort of a judgment. And so I absolutely believe that we should ignore any revengeful members of our community and focus on things like restorative justice and teaching moments, and doing the appropriate thing in this situation.
So, yes, as Betsy said, the Policy Committee considered this thoroughly last year, and I think another one of the district's archaic policies is, if a child is found with alcohol or drugs, they're suspended automatically for four days. And if they commit an incident of racial bias, there's nothing prescribed for that. And I said to the high school principal, I said, if my son shows up at work drunk, he's going to be sent to counseling. If my son goes to work and he is racially insensitive or inappropriate, he's going to get fired. And so our concern is to, we're raising children, we're helping to raise children, and so we want to, this is the time we want them to fail, not later on in life. And as we were discussing this policy, which did not come to fruition, and we still don't have anything to point to when an incident of bias occurs, because no one's trying to be vengeful, but there are people who come and say, this happened, what are you doing about it? And we can't say anything because it's an issue of student privacy. But we would like something to say, like, the student's going to go to counseling, the student had to do community service, things like that. When we were discussing this policy, there was, it was last April, I think, and a student had been admitted to Harvard University, and they had done something really stupid on social media, very racially offensive.
Not racist.
I'm sorry, Harvard, not one of our students. A student was on the internet. And a student was, so was racially insensitive and anti-Semitic, and went around in a group chat, and the student had their admission to Harvard rescinded. And wow, what a lesson to learn. That student had never learned before that that was inappropriate? Clearly, to me, they had not. And so these are the things that we try to balance, because that's quite the punishment right there.
I mentioned restorative justice before, and I think it is something we should be doing more of. As I understand it, it's about repairing relationships between offenders and victims. It's about talking, mutual understanding, and seeking reconciliation. Complicated world, by the way, thanks for all the easy questions tonight.
Anytime.
Yeah. You know, this is another case where there are some really interesting equity questions, what's going on at home? How did we get to this point? And, you know, it is so hard, because there are some things that can be done where there has to be a strong punishment. And I think it is going to require a bit of conversation to find those lines about where restorative justice, which as a broad concept, I hope we can pursue, and where there are times when there needs to be strong punishments. We should be guided, and I'll just give you an example, in the case of sexual violence, I'm not sure it works to just kind of say, we'll work this out. You know, there are going to be times when it's complicated and strong action is necessary, but the fundamental goal, you know, with all of the discipline is to ask, what is best for the student community in an educational setting? We're there to teach, and we're there to teach everyone, and it has to be about mutual understanding, it has to be about respect, and we can rethink a lot of the disciplinary process, I hope.
You can throw a kid out of Harvard, but you can't throw a kid out of public school. So I think that the major challenge is really to figure out what punishment or what reaction, maybe a better word, is appropriate in any given situation. This is a serious question, and it needs to be addressed.
Thank you to all the candidates, the audience members, the YWCA for allowing us to use our space, and the Not in Our Town for sponsoring this event. I also hope this event was informative to you all. It was certainly informative to me, as this year I can actually vote.
And everyone, remember to vote on November 6th, particularly, it is so important to vote on every level, local, state, national, particularly since some people cannot vote. So it's really important that you go out and you share your voices for those who cannot vote, and to make an impact in the community. So thank you so much.